Good evening. Welcome to the November 20th, 2025 meeting of the Minnetonka Planning Commission. The Commission generally meets twice a month, always on a Thursday. The schedule and tentative meeting agendas can be obtained by calling the Planning Division or by checking the city website at minnetonka mn.gov. The Commission holds public hearings on land use applications. For all land use applications, the city notifies property owners within at least 400 feet of the site and posts plans and information on the city website. For some applications, the city also places signs on the properties and notices in the Sun Sailor newspaper. From a specific process standpoint, the Commission makes recommendations to the City Council on rezonings, subdivisions, conditional use permits, and amendments to the city's comprehensive guide plan, zoning ordinance, and subdivision regulations. We also make final decisions on site plans, signage requests, variance requests, and expansion permits, unless those requests are part of an application that must be heard by the City Council, in which case the Commission makes a recommendation and the Council makes the final decision. Anyone dissatisfied with a final Planning Commission decision may appeal to the City Council by submitting a written request to city staff within 10 days of this meeting. From a broader standpoint, the city's comprehensive guide plan, zoning ordinance, and subdivision regulations are the city's best efforts to codify a balance between individual rights and community responsibilities. Individual rights are easy to understand; community responsibilities are more subtle, but the idea is that we, as members of a community, agree to limit our individual rights for the common good of the group. The Planning Division, the Planning Commission, and the City Council are charged with managing this sometimes difficult balancing act. We ask that you keep this broader perspective in mind as we review tonight's applications. Again, welcome. Staff, will you please call roll?
Minion?
Here, but my mic won't go on.
We did have a little bit of an issue at the Sustainability Commission. They, it seems that the lights aren't coming on, but the mics do come on, so...
I know, I have a light, I'm here.
Thank you. Waterman is absent. Banks is absent. Brink?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
Henry is absent. Chair Maxwell?
Here. There are four of us seated tonight.
Our lights are all staying on, sorry.
I can, I can try to mute, oh, no, I can't. I can't even mute you.
All right, nobody breathe. All right, next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda, and since we only have four people seated, there are two items that require five affirmative votes. So would we call this a change memo, or should I just make a motion here, Ms. Thomas?
Chair, I think you can just, someone can make a motion and with the apologies to anyone from the public who may have come for either of those items.
I'll make the motion with my microphone.
Okay, so Commissioner Minion, may I have a motion to postpone the following items to the December 4th, 2025 meeting of the Planning Commission? Number one, item 7A, a front yard setback variance for a garage at 4241 Winchester Court, and item 8A, a rear yard setback variance for a garage at 15020 Tamer Lane.
Chair, yes, I'll make the motion.
And is there a second?
I will second.
All right, second Hanson. Do I, do I have to poll the audience for this one? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Those items will be postponed again to the December 4th meeting, so I apologize if you came for those, and those will be heard later. Given that, may I have a motion to approve the rest of the agenda?
I'll make that motion to approve the agenda.
Motion Brink, second Minion, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, next is approval of the minutes of the October 30th meeting, is any changes? No? All right, motion to approve those?
I'll make the motion.
Motion Brink?
I'll second.
Second Minion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries. Next is report from staff.
Thank you, Chair and Commission. One City Council meeting to report on on November the 10th. Two items on that agenda that the Planning Commission had reviewed previously. The first was the DeYoung Estates, which was that two lot subdivision at Old Excelsior Boulevard and Sparrow Road. That was approved on the Council's consent agenda. And then the Council also discussed the concept plan for the English Rose Licensed Residential Care Facilities at Hopkins Crossroad, 2000 Hopkins Crossroad, the old Omegon site. It would say that the Council certainly expressed support for the use at the property. Much like Planning Commission, the majority of the Council indicated a wish that that the oldest part of the building could remain, but they also indicated that they understood if that could not stay, if that did not make sense from a financial perspective, they would understand that. Staff has since had a follow-up meeting with the applicants and do understand that they're hoping to make their formal applications in January of next year, so that will come back before this body as a formal application. My only other item is that there's been some, some changes to our meeting schedule. We had planned on canceling the 12-4 meeting, but now given the postponement of these two items, we will have a 12-4 meeting. Those will be the only items on that agenda, so if you're not able to be at 12-4, I've spoken with some who aren't already, but if you're not able to be here, if you could let me know so that we can in turn plan accordingly. Thanks.
All right, thanks, Ms. Thomas. Next is report from the Commission. Does any of we here have anything to report? Commissioner Minion?
Thank you. Just kind of a late thank you, but to all the judge and the, all the judges for voting, all the work that the city went on, they just did a great job with our voting process this year, and I apologize for being a little bit late in saying that, but they just did a great job. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? All right, let's move on to the next item. The consent agenda, we have no items for tonight, and the non-consent agenda, item 8A has been moved to the, to December 4th. And so moving on to the next item, which is other, other items, item 9A, which is in other business is, I'll see if I can pull it up here. This is a conditional use permit and site and building plan review for a coffee shop with a drive-through at 17505 Highway 7. We'll start with a staff report.
There you go. I was having a little bit of issues with my mic, too. So, our first one, just to start with, the staff recommendation. For this project, staff is recommending that the City Council adopt the resolution approving a conditional use permit and final site and building plans for Seven Brew at 17501 Highway 7. So just to start where we're looking at here, here's a map of the entire city. We are over in the southwest corner of the city. Getting a little bit more specific, here's Highway 101, County Road 101, and then Highway 7. So we're at the southwest, southeast corner of that intersection. The site has a couple different accesses. First, they have one, a right in and a right out at Highway 7. Then also, there is a connection at Hutchins Drive to County Road 101, so a couple spots there. Some other things to note with the site, there is Purgatory Creek is right behind it, so you can see this meandering creek that sort of crosses, sort of goes right along their property line. And then also, there is a trail that can, that goes right next to Purgatory Creek also. And then here's Culvers, there's also a good marker for me personally, who visits that place quite a bit. Next, here's a look at the existing site. So here is, you can see it's a flat parking lot, there isn't really any improvements in that area. There's your Culvers reference, then Northern Tool. There's a few other buildings with tenants within that building, the Becker Furniture, Opitz Outlet, and Mega Pickleball are all within that large building. Also, just for reference, Culvers, they also have a drive-through, and that was approved back in 2021, and the red area outlines again where this proposed development will be located. Here's a zoomed-out look at that site, too. Another major element of this area is the large parking lot, so the site is 12 acres in size and has 482 parking spaces. Those are all shared between the buildings, so fairly substantial parking lot. There's also some area over here to the north of Northern Tool that is not striped, but is also paved. Going back and doing a little bit of history on the site, 14 years ago, there was a review of this property as part of a master plan, and with that, the vision was to look at what do we see this property being used as long-term. So, again, we're at the long-term right now. So back then, when they looked at this, there was an envision to have additional buildings. At the time, there was a fast food restaurant over here, so sort of keeping with that, but there was a vision to add additional smaller buildings over on the site. One of the important parts of that vision was to have, again, those buildings pushed away from Purgatory Creek and keeping that area sort of natural, so you can see that area there, but then also to connect it with trails, so that existing trail there, making sure that still is a connection for folks to get into this area. So, looking at the proposal tonight, here's a look at on the left-hand side, again, looking at the far zoomed-out area. Something the applicant has proposed to do is have, continue the bike trail or bike striping on the property. It will not be in green, but there is striping there currently that shows where bikes, bicyclists should go if you come off of this trail. So you could come off the trail, there's a route that shows where you should travel to get to existing Culvers, but then also extending that to this, to the new Seven Brew site. Also, despite this being a very large parking lot, with this new addition, there's several parking spaces lost, and it brings it below what city code requires for parking, so there's a 16 space deficit. However, city code allows you an option to show proof of parking or showing how you could meet code with parking without actually having to construct it. So in this case, what the applicant has done is they've just shown a striping plan that would meet city code requirements. I would just involve them to stripe here because that is an existing pavement, so a sort of an easy route for them to go if that parking is needed. So if the city noticed that this large parking lot was full on several instances and there was issues with parking, we could require that there's additional parking to be striped. So that has been met. Looking more zoomed in at the proposed development, what the applicant's proposing is two buildings and then enclosure for trash. One of them would be a place where they would create the, make beverages, coffee and other different types of beverages they have there, and then also a separate, very slightly offset, I think I was told, six inches apart, so it's very close to the building. You'll see it looks like they're attached, which is a little part of the design, but they're not attached, there's two separate ones, and that other one has a cooler and then also a dry storage area. But looking at access, you can see the red lines in here drawn show how someone would access this drive-through. So you'd come off of Highway 7 mostly, some you could also come off of this area, if you came from Hutchins Drive, you'd come from the left-hand side. But you'd come into the site, you'd take a quick right turn, and then you'd take a left turn into those two drivelanes. So a little unique, they have two drivelanes that go through their area, and when you get into that area, you'd come around, and a little different from a lot of drive-throughs that we know, there isn't a window. Instead, what they'll have is some sliding doors, and people would come outside with a pad of some sort to take your order, take payment, go inside, make your beverage, and come back outside. It's a fairly large drive-through, as you can see, it's, since it has two lanes, it can accommodate up to 19 vehicles. Our city code requires at least six, so it's a pretty large drive-through. Here's a look at the buildings that's being proposed. It has brick-like material, it's sort of a concrete material that they use, but it looks like concrete, it looks like brick. It's two tones of, of natural materials. Also, they have blue accents on the roof and then also on the overhang that they're proposing, and those would both be made out of metal. And here's a look at those double sliding doors they'd have, so you'd, in the, in their programming, you'd come through, your vehicle would stop up here, and then the store would come open, and someone would come out to take your order. Here's some views from Highway 7, just to look and see how that sort of works between Culvers and this building, so you can see Culvers here, and then you can see Seven Brew over here. It's a little bit lower profile, but definitely has similar architectural styles, similar colors, similar pattern, definitely fits in with the massing of the area. You then, as you turn in, here's a look from as you're turning off of Highway 7, and then here's as you enter the site and see the building. Also, next here is their floor plans, it's pretty plain, there's not much to it. They have a service area where they would make the drinks, and then a bathroom area and corridor, and then here's that building, again, it's going to be closer than this, this shows a pretty far apart, it's only going to be six inches apart, as you can see back here. These are actually two separate buildings, so it'll look as if there's just one and not two, but that storage area just has a cooler and then a dry storage area. Here's a look at the trash enclosure, it has the same elements as the other buildings, so similar in nature with the same blue accents. And then with any project, we always look and make sure that meets all of the standards for that district, so this is in the B2 district, and as we went through there, it meets the building height, the setback requirements, floor ratio, lot coverage, access, and under lot coverage, that's starred because it's actually being reduced. So right now, it's going to go down, right now, it's all pavement, they'll have a few landscaping islands, it'll sort of break up that large parking lot. And then the next one that we have here is looking at stormwater mitigation. There's not a lot of opportunities on the site for stormwater mitigation at surface because it is a very large parking lot and there isn't any green area nearby, so what the applicant's proposing is doing underground. So what the applicant's proposing is doing underground storage chambers. So you can see the blue lines here connect where there would be water captured and bring it over to the chambers that are underneath the drive-through lanes. Also, on your screen, you'll see a green line that's referencing a private utility line that was an early part of conversations, so make sure that was going to be an appropriate distance away. This has been reviewed by our city plumbing inspector, and he feels comfortable with the location of the building and the location of that private line, provided a few conditions that have been added. So with this site, it was important for staff to look very closely at traffic. So to do that, we consulted SRF to do a traffic review this fall. And what they were looking for specifically was impacts to adjacent roads, site circulation, drive-through operations, and other necessary improvements. The first thing they looked at was accidents, what's been happening out here, because Highway 7's had a very close look recently. If you weren't aware, there's currently been a safety study done by the county, or by MinDOT, sorry, by MinDOT to review all the way from Hopkins to St. Bonifatius. So there's been a pretty big look there with safety, so safety is something that the city definitely wanted to review closely. And there has not been any accidents at this access point in the past five years, and there's been two in the past 10 years. So not a lot of accidents despite this being a very high-traffic area. In addition, with their study, what they found was there'd be about a half a percent increase in traffic, and that's 104 trips. So it's not a very high-traffic increase with this new user. The other thing they looked at, which was fairly interesting, is looking at during the peak time, how much time do folks have when they're leaving this site? So an appropriate amount of time to have between a vehicle passing and the next vehicle coming is six and a half seconds. That's what best practice is. And for this one, the average during the peak business time is eight, almost eight and a half seconds. So definitely clears that for appropriateness for people leaving here with traffic. And then lastly, the consultant looked at the actual drive-through and how that was constructed to making sure that was appropriate and that it would accommodate the projected vehicle traffic. They looked at Twin Cities coffee shops that are similar, drive-through only. As this one will be a drive-through only, there'll be no people coming in and out of it. The model for this business is all of it to be drive-through. And what they also looked at Seven Brew locations in Florida, and they found that this was an appropriate plan that they had set forward. So there were a few recommendations, most of which the city is accommodating, but there is one that we are unable to, unfortunately. One recommendation from our consultant was to relocate an ADA parking stall. Right now, it's located in this lower area right next to the building. The traffic consultant noted to move that over mainly because it could get trapped within this circulation. If there is a very large backup here, it'd be difficult for that car to leave. However, staff has talked with our building official, who is our resident expert on ADA parking, and they said it would need to stay there because it has to be per ADA law, it has to be the closest parking space available. So unfortunately, it will have to stay there. We're going to work with the applicant to find another route that meets ADA without really needing to change the plan. But the stall would not be able to move over here. The plan was originally to move it here and then have it access over, but that's not possible due to ADA requirements. Also, one of them was to restrict internal stalls to employee parking only. So staff was able to put a condition there for the other non-handicap parking stall there, that that will be for employees only. And then lastly, they had a recommendation to provide a bike rack on the site, which the applicant has provided with an updated plan, but then also is added as a condition of approval. So lastly, we don't talk a whole lot about this here, but we do send these projects out to outside agencies. I'm not sure if everyone's aware of that. When there's something near a natural resource, we send it to the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, like we did in this one because it is right next to Purgatory Creek. We also sense this is so close to a MinDOT road, we send it also over to them to make sure they have a chance to review it and provide some comments. And as part of this, they did take a look at that, and they did note, first off, as I said before, they are doing a traffic study right now, so they're very aware of the site. It's been looked at a lot recently, specifically the Highway 7 101 intersection. And they did note the existing issue with that Highway 7 access. One of their main concerns is the closeness of this intersection. Let's go back to this picture. This access point, the closeness to this intersection here. So they know that's a bit of an issue, bit of a concern, an existing concern. And they recommended exploring the possibility of closing or modifying that Highway 7 access. In response to those concerns, the city has added a condition requiring that the applicant close the drive aisle to the north of this if issues or crashes occur. So the thought behind that is that if there's an issue with vehicles coming here and slowing down, except to take this right turn, and there's several here backing up, something the city could do if there's crashes and a lot of issues there, that the city could have that one require that it's closed here, so vehicles would have to move through, so they wouldn't have this sort of block up there if there's repeating and constant issues with that location. And then as far as what the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, they reviewed the request and did not have any comments. So with that, that brings us to the end of, nearly the end of the presentation. But staff is recommending approval of this request really for three reasons. The first one is that it meets all of the city code standards, looking at the zoning district design standards, parking standards, CUP standards, and site and building plan review. There's a lot of standards with this one, but it meets all of those different requirements that are outlined there. Number two, the proposed site and building plans are reasonable. The city's traffic consultant, SRF, confirmed that the circulation access were appropriate. Also, the proposal would add an additional landscaping to the site and reduce sort of the monotony of that, oops, sorry, the monotony of that large parking lot. And then lastly, the proposed plan is consistent with that 2011 Highway 7 and County Road 101 master plan. With that, this is a recommendation tonight for the planning commission that will need to go to city council. The city council meeting it's scheduled for is December 8th, so if anyone wants to continue it, it will be discussed, it will be on that future agenda, tentatively. And with that, I pass it over to the chair and commission for questions.
Thanks, Mr. Engmanson. What questions does the commission have? Commissioner Hanson?
Thanks. Just waiting for my light to turn on. Thank you, Chair. Thanks, Drew, for the presentation. Just trying to make sure I keep my ducks in a row here. So you're talking about a Highway 7 safety study. I'm kind of under the impression there's also maybe like a Highway 7 survey, like a resident survey. What do you want to see on Highway 7 that was maybe in the Minnetoka memo, maybe somewhere else? But I saw an Instagram ad for it, for sure. So I'm curious, like, I think the timing is different, but what's maybe, what's that Highway 7 survey looking like? Because that could theoretically impact the business here.
Yeah. Yeah, the access would stay the same. I know that was something that was brought up, if this access would change, they've shown that. They have shown changes at Highway 7 and 101. I don't know if Ms. Thomas remembers what they had there for a proposal, but I think there's still going to be an access there. I think there was a different options they had, if I remember looking through it. I don't remember a specific plan to really do a change to that point at this that they've decided on. I think they gave different options they would go through.
Okay. Maybe just something to be mindful of, that I feel like that's probably been happening for a couple of years, rumors in the wind at least. Maybe for the city staff, and Drew, if you want to hand this off to the applicant, that's fine. I think the timing of particularly Culvers and Seven Brew, I don't have a lot of cheeseburgers with my coffee necessarily, but I've always thought like, hey, it does get a little hectic in there with the Mega Pickle and the Culvers at night, frequent flyer at Culvers, hand up. So I'm wondering about like signage in the parking lot to say, like, do you prefer, like, does the city prefer people go like around the north, kind of, if you're coming in off of the side street? Is it Hutchins?
Yes.
Do you prefer people go out and around, kind of like the outside of the parking lot? Or you, would you prefer people cut in? And is that something, again, I don't know necessarily the right way. You guys, as a business, have way more experience with that, but something to think about from a safety perspective.
Chair and Commissioner Hanson, there, we haven't added any requirements for directional signage. That is something the city allows. So the applicant did say they wanted to have some directional signage. It couldn't advertise the business, but it could send folks a different area that is a route they'd have. But the most logical route would stay around the outside. I don't, when we looked at this, this is sort of the busiest route around there, so that is where you'd, and also the easiest path for people. So you'd expect people to enter from Hutchins and to sort of take this outside route around. That'd be the most logical and way that would probably would be preferred to folks. So that's an option they could look at, too, directional signage.
We'll have you make a presentation after we're done with the staff. Yeah, thanks. Any other questions? Commissioner Brink?
Well, thank you, Chair. Yeah, now, we were just talking about access with Culvers and everything. Maybe this is a question for the applicant, but I'm presuming that Culvers has been part of the conversation here and with access, because they are going to be sharing some of the same access space there. So I just want to make sure that that's all being coordinated. When times get busy, it could get, I don't want to say congested, but just real busy in there. And then just the other businesses, too, if they have any comments on this. But is it, is this a single property owner for this whole site? And then I just had one other, I guess, more of a comment on the stormwater drainage. It looked like the underground chambers are being installed to handle just the drainage from the site here, from the coffee shop. And I see on the master plan, it shows kind of like a regional pond or a pond for that accommodates the whole site. I would assume that's something that's going to get addressed down the road.
Yeah. So first, the property is owned all by one property owner, so they've been, they signed off in the application. We've had a few conversations with them of how this all would work together. And then, yeah, this is a design, these designs mainly show an option and sort of a scenario that this would work. There hasn't been any proposal to have this, again, if they were to put this pond there, that would cover some existing area here, so it'd be a larger change to the site. But yeah, that's what they showed originally as a scenario. So they had a few different scenarios of ways the property could be changed.
I wanted to ask, too, has there ever been any history of flooding or inundation on that northeast portion of the property that's real low there?
This was reviewed by our stormwater specialists, and they did not comment on any concerns with stormwater there, so I wouldn't think there's been any issues going on with that.
All right. Thank you.
If I could also add on Chair Maxwell and Commissioner Brink, because I recall this 2011 master plan. And yes, we had envisioned if there was a larger type of redevelopment of the site, even if that strip mall were to be maintained, but there was a larger development of these outlots. We would like to see some green space, some green infrastructure improvement, which is what's primarily shown here. To this point, we've essentially had just the remodel of what was an old Burger King, if you remember that, into the Culvers, so not really a redevelopment. And now this proposal, certainly it's always the city's goal to see more green infrastructure, more green space adjacent to what would be Purgatory Creek there.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Minion?
Thank you. Can you hear me? The light's a couple of seconds late.
When you talked about 0.5% increase in traffic, what does that end up being per hour?
So I'll have to go back to the report. What they had was they talked about having it be 104 vehicles added. If I remember, I believe that was, I can't remember if that was total, I'd have to go check back to the review, but they were basing it on apples-to-apples, so it's a total of half a percent that they had. But I can go and look into that.
About 104 per hour type of thing?
I'll have to go and check to see what the report said.
Do you know if there's been any talk with untides? Is there any type of communication, maybe that's an applicant question, regards to, when I look at making changes like this, I think often about that hose that runs across the parking lot as a possible trip hazard for those who are maybe less able. Has there any been conversations with untides about providing that water over to their stand? That might be an applicant question, so.
I would recommend you direct that to the applicant.
All right. And then is there any issues in regards to if they did have a problem on making that turn there, would it ever be possible to maybe widen the lane, that right turn lane off of 7?
Takes a very long time for my mic to come on, too. That would have to be a conversation with MinDOT, so that'd be something the city could help facilitate. We could connect them with MinDOT to discuss that as an alternative option. The only one that staff has provided is really we can do is things on the property as far as with conditions. So that's why we've added that one to sort of block off this, to give people, to relieve any pressure if that was shown in the future. Our consultant didn't see that as an issue right now. That's why we're not recommending that occurs at this moment. But that's really the city's ability to control this, anything outside into MinDOT's area would have to be worked on with MinDOT.
Pretty low on your radar is what I'm hearing, then. Excellent. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Brink, do you have another question first?
Just one more. Utilities, water, and sewer, are those going to come off public or private lines to serve that?
Waiting for my thing to connect again. Sorry for the delay. Those would be all connected to private lines.
All right. At this point, I'll bring the applicant forward. If you have a presentation, you may make it at this time, and you may, and then we'll do questions from the commission to you. Following the applicant presentation and questions, then we will open a public hearing.
My guest is on with Seven Brew. We're based out of Louisville, Kentucky. Seven Brew's corporate facility is out of Arkansas. Basically, everything that was spoke through here is really a great overview of what our goal to achieve is for this particular plot of land within the parking field there. One of the particular questions you had was signings that was directional to direct the traffic, the flow of traffic. That is a standard piece of signings that is only specific to directions, no advertising, it's not logoed or branded in any aspect. We normally do not show that on plans until we actually get assigned a requirement in code that we can put in X that can be illuminated. They have to be three feet above the ground and so far, but they usually go at the ends of the queuing lanes. We have put up to four on a property before to ensure that our traffic patterns are adequate and safe on that. Another question I think that came up was about the bike rack. We intend to put on the bike rack, location would be specific to what the city would like us to do for the safety of the people riding the bikes and also to give them adequate space to put them. And also, there is a picnic table outside that we place at every facility for those specific individuals, because sometimes families will walk up and purchase through the sliding doors you saw, and they want to sit down with their children and their families, which is typically how we do everything like that. There was, someone spoke to a hose across a parking lot. Are you familiar with the one for the flower shop? I did see that twice, and then I never saw it again, so I don't know if it's a seasonal, because at this time of year, I would suspect that they're probably not, I wouldn't think they'd have an above-ground exposed water line, hopefully, because it'd probably freeze. Not yet, but eventually will. I'm not familiar with even where that's being fed from as the main disconnect off of that or even what size it was, because when I saw it, I was, didn't put two and two together till the second time I saw it, that it was servicing them. I thought it might have been something for a service company repairing something on there. I can work and speak with the owner of the property to see, is this a short term, a long term? How is it being fed? Is it metered off of a house meter? I would think that he wouldn't be doing that, because it's probably several thousand gallons a month to service that business, I would think. And I don't know how that would affect on stormwater runoff. In Kentucky, they bill you, basically, your gallons goes against your sewer, and it's quite expensive for the sewer part, at least in Louisville, Kentucky it is. I can ask the owner of the property about that. We're not familiar with how that's being serviced. And there's several things that we could probably work with them on if it is a hazard, as you spoke. And I can see where it would be a trip hazard, I do agree, especially if it was full on there. But Seven Brew's goal is to bring a great product, and we tend to employ between 50 and 60 typically youth. I'm not going to, you know, say the older people there, and they're mainly part-time. It's a fun environment. We, there is no external audio ordering menu boards. They drive up, they order off basically a smart tablet. We do have an app on a phone, and the environment is more welcoming, and it's not so corporate by any advantage. They wear T-shirts, they, you know, have fun days, et cetera. And the product is, changes monthly. We have the same core 40 pieces, but they'll change to address, you know, specials for the month, pumpkins buy, stuff like that. We have, we have area development agreement within the Minneapolis area to build out 50 stores. I think that was in the presentation. And that's And that's anywhere from even Prairie to V Heights to Apple Valley. And we're in a negotiation of not signing leases within those territories or purchase land. We do purchase land at some events too. And the overall company has had a massive growth over the past 30 months. It's actually gone from 140 stores to over 500. And it's because it's just exploded the business model and it's been good. We're quicker than your typical drive-through. I won't say the company, we're tend to be 70% of the cost, maybe a little bit less. And we get you, the staff can turn the people quite fast on that. And usually about three and a half to four and a half minutes is the average time by the time you take your order and by the time you leave. And like most coffee smoothie places, we do a lot of morning business and maybe after 6:30 also. So during the day, it's not overly busy, et cetera. But for the most part, if you have any questions, I'm here to at least answer them. If not, take them in and get back an answer to you, that would be correct. But the goal here is to accommodate your request, to fulfill what makes sense for everyone and to take a parcel of a parking lot and make it better than what it is, which we will do. We have several other businesses that we do, but it's not outside of Seven Brew. So we're familiar with the construction, ground-up buildings, so on and so forth. Anything I can answer for you now?
Commissioner Hanson?
Sir, the presentation, appreciate it. Thanks for coming to visit. I generally have one, I think this is an easy question for you, but I was very curious when I saw the plans. I'm curious about why the buildings are so close together but not connected.
Currently, right now, the business model facilitates prefab buildings.
Got it.
They're already state-approved, third-party inspected, fully licensed within there. And so you can only transport them just like a wide load.
Yep, that makes sense.
And we are looking at another model that would put them together because I do agree because when you had the six inches you spoke of, we just opened a facility in Helena, Montana.
Yeah.
And the dilemma was what do we put between the two buildings? That's, we don't have to maintain per se because you can't cut grass unless you've got a weed eater. And so we put in a higher in type of decor, hardscape rock to do that. But we also want to make sure it doesn't collect trash because that does happen on there. That's the main reason. But we do put walls to make them appear connected.
Got it.
Because a lot of, I think it's more visually appealing, in my opinion. I'm not trying to sell anything to this, but the ones that we have been putting out, we go ahead and adhere, affix them together to appear that. It does cost more, but you know, I don't want to put something that doesn't look good.
Yeah, it was not a critique by any means, it's just general curiosity about that six-inch gap.
It is interesting to watch them put the building down. They'll come in with a crane and they'll drop the building in eight hours and they'll connect it in 36 hours. And roughly a week later, it's after it gets looked at by two people, it's connected, all the utilities, the mechanical, electrical department, it comes 100% there except for the signs on the building.
Cool, thank you.
Commissioner Brink?
Yeah, excuse me, just one question here. And I think you're working on this, resolving this, this is the parking with the ADA and the employee. The way it was shown on the plan, I think part of the concern was, you know, somebody getting back in their car in those areas, you know, it could be blocked, you know, from the drive-through traffic. And then also just getting out of there, they have to drive through the drive-through to get out, right? So is that typical or has that been a problem?
It's very typical. It's not a problem. I would have to look at this one in particular. It may have a pass, what we call a pass lane. Everyone that works there is on foot there. So we, they walk to your car with there. With that being said, they will actually stop the flow to let someone back out. And then they also can drive around on a pass-through lane around the side of that. The lanes are 12 and a half feet wide with a 24-inch in the middle, which is kind of like just a hatched line for people to walk in. And they're, it's very common because of the code is for ADA and everything's ADA compliant. And we do want to put the closest one to meet code on there. Another thing on a lot of these is we will do connector sidewalks to the closest sidewalk because a lot of people walk now, which is great, especially the timing and the seasonality of the weather is good. So we'll do that. In this aspect, there already is a connector on there.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Minion?
Oh, wait a second for my little green light to come on. I can hear my voice. Thank you for coming tonight. I really like the idea of the ADA being able to have somebody there to back out. That's a great use of that property. Will you talk a little bit, meaning the great use of that location, will you talk a little bit about the business plan in regards to what you see as flow with 19 cars in that turnaround parking area? Is there a large volume of people walking up to the doors? Is there, kind of where I'm going with this is if you were a person that was making use of that handicapped spot on a regular basis, do you see a lot of people parking there and actually walking up or wheeling up to the door to make a purchase instead of just doing the drive-through?
No, we do not. We actually have engaged in some of our locations, we have employees who are have a disability. So we see that spot utilized more by them than anything. As in people walking up with foot traffic to that, very little, as in below probably 5%. And usually it's seasonal on a well-weathered day, for use of a better term, on there, we don't. The first time I went to Seven Brew before I became an investor-owner, I did walk up because I was very curious. And it was, it was very simple to walk up because they were like, what can I do for you, et cetera. And we just don't see a lot of foot traffic to there because the whole concept is ease, speed, cost, product quality, and experience. And in this day and age, we see more and more people that want to get in and out of anything they're doing. They tend to drive around like we, it's an ongoing joke, they want to park closer. We own gyms and people will drive around a lot to park closest to the front door of a gym. I've always laughed about that. Unfortunately, I might be one of those people. But that is the, we just don't have a lot of walk-up traffic. I mean, it's not even enough to even calculate. And they do calculate, or they started to in the past six months, walk-up traffic compared to drive-through traffic. It hasn't even been a number that's even enough to even record. Obviously, in this weather that we're going to see probably in the next four or five months in this part of the country, you won't see any walk-ups at all. In Kentucky, that's where I'm out of, there was hardly any.
Sustainability, do you have anything into the plans where you could do solar or some sort of way to be more energy efficient? Will you talk a little bit about the envelope that you're going to set in place, the physical envelope and the energy standards that are involved in that? If there's any alternative energy sources for it?
Well, the building being as small as it is, 510 square feet and it's not all flat, there are some restrictions if you were to put solar panels on that, et cetera, et cetera. We do exceed any and all current and existing, like COM checks facilities for new energy. And that's all the way from insulation materials to building type of materials that we use. We also utilize any and all efficiency equipment. We have air dams on the doors to conserve energy with airflow out. We actually have, the heaters are all, we'll base it off the property if it needs gas or electric, what's better served for this part of the country. We see actually a lot more electric around here than we do gas. Or if you were down, in the business-wise, in the smaller footprint. So that's what we do, anytime we can, we would. If there's anything you'd recommend or maybe an option that we should consider, we're willing to, you know, not only see what we can do, you know, if it's to better serve the community, we're all about it. Because it is a community-oriented company. I'm not trying to sell or pitch, but if you related to a lot of the social media and what they do, the involvement they have with the youth and also with businesses and the support they do, it's expensive, but it's actually pretty amazing.
Wonderful. Wonderful. The hose issue is a non-podable water that feeds that flower shop. I have no idea what their plans are, but I always see that in the summertime, I think of the people who are less able and tripping over it. Right now, it feeds off of a quick connect, a sprinkler system, and they run the hose all the way across. Or no, that one might tie into the building. But my thought would be is if there's been any conversations with them about basically shortening that up. But I am not in any way pushing that as far as telling you what to do. I'm simply throwing it out there as an encouragement to see if we could shorten that up and make a cooperation between the two of you. And I'm not looking for a comment on that, I'm just kind of throwing it out there for thought.
We will, we will look into it. I'm not going to say that to say that because if it is a hazard and it could affect any of our clients or experience, I mean, we deal with loss prevention and HR stuff all the time and the other businesses we have. And it's unfortunate, but it is part of the world today. We want to avoid and get away from it. And you know, it's probably a lot easier fix if someone probably just wanted to spend a thousand dollars to do it, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I'm just seeing that you could probably cut two-thirds of that stretch off and be better that way. So, well, it looks wonderful, thank you.
All right, I have one question. I can't really tell from the floor plans here because you talked through how staff will get between the two buildings. Like there's not a door in between those six inches. So it looks like they might be going out one side, walking all the way around to go to the other side.
No, the building that it orients, I don't know if you can, if you go back to the one screen that you had, maybe go to the topical if you could, I can probably explain. So if you're on the front of the building that closest that says a one-inch water meter, that's the, that is basically the front of the building that people would enter around through the right side. If you, the front of the smaller building, which we, we'll call it as the cooler enclosure for all, the front of that, they would only access through that to go to the walk-in cooler, which is completely surrounded. There is no back door or anything to that facility. So there's only one way in and one way out. It's small, it's a very small cooler, but you have to have for this, you know, business application. On this right here, this reflects without a snowblower room, we call it a snowblower room because of the part of the country we're in, but we've elected to continue to have the room, but not the snowblower because I'm in a position, I don't think that someone that's not a snowblower should be using a snowblower. Does that make sense? And you have younger kids and I just, we can pay someone to come clean the lot. We want to keep the room in front of it though for just what we call dry storage on there. They would walk behind a wall, which is probably not reflected very well on this drawing, and the wall is just a blind wall to walk in and go to the cooler. You would not see the door, so on and so forth, if that makes sense. I can provide another drawing that may be more of a dimensional 3D walkthrough that might be beneficial to the council here.
So on this image here, they'd go out, the service area, area out on the right side, and then walk around the front of the building and then into the front of the cooler building to, okay. Okay, thank you. I was thinking they were rotated. Any other questions from commissioners? All right, thank you. We're going to open the public hearing at this point. If I can find my public hearing rules. So if you'd like to speak, come forward to the podium, give your name and your address for the record. Keep your comments brief. Any questions can come to me and then I will get them answered later by the appropriate, by the appropriate person. The public hearing is open. No one on the phone? All right, I don't see anybody who wants to speak, so I will close the public hearing. So at this point, I think we're ready for Mr. Ingallsen to give us some comments.
There's a couple of questions. I just looked up here, just want to make sure you have those before you make your vote. So the first one I know, Commissioner Hanson talked about the intersection, what's sort of planned here. It's called a continuous flow intersection. So it sort of separates the left-hand turn lanes here and then allows people to also take a right turn. And we have an engineer here who probably knows even more about that than I do. But the gist of it is, is you still be able to take this right-hand turn. This would sort of stay the same, that right exit towards here to go onto Highway 7. So the change for that for this business probably is pretty minimal, in my personal opinion. But it would be a change to the intersection, definitely. But as it relates to this access point, probably pretty close to the same. The other question we too had was about the eastbound trips. So that 104 amount is daily trips. So you would, so originally you thought, I think that's not very much. They said 26 during the peak hour, and that would be just exiting the site. So entering the site, there'll be a lot more, 224 for the day and 57 during peak hour, so almost one per minute entering off of Highway 7. And as you think about that longer, that probably makes sense because this would be just people entering to go east because you can't go west on Highway 7. So if you wanted to go west here, naturally, if someone's thinking about this, you wouldn't go here because you'd have to go pretty far down Highway 7 to turn around somewhere. So if you wanted to go either north, south, east, or west, you would probably, what they're determining, the traffic engineers, that you would travel through the site and then go onto Hutchins because that's your quickest route. So that 104 was daily. The peak they had though was 26 for the peak hour.
Thank you. All right, we're ready for any further questions from the commission or comments. Commissioner Hanson?
Thanks Chair. I'll get not too long-winded here, but I've been to a couple of Seven Brews actually. And it's been interesting to watch Seven Brew as a kind of a corporate entity grow over the last couple of years. They've had some significant cash infusions from different entities. So this is not a small mom-and-pop shop, as they said, by 50 targeted sites in the Twin Cities area. This is a, this is a big corporate business that's looking to move into Minnetaka. With, you know, set that to the side, they're going to employ people that live here and hopefully teach people, you know, how to work and how to grow. And so that, and then we've seen the success of the Dunkin', you know, in particular, that drive-through setup is probably pretty similar to what we're talking about here. That might be more narrow, but there's always a line in the morning. And so I think what we're seeing here is there's a demand and an opportunity to grow. And I think this adds a nice complementing feature for this neck of the woods. I would say maybe just as a comment, like maybe something for the property owner to think about is directional signage with this business owner with Culvers or whatever. I do feel like there's a tendency for people to kind of roll through here with some relative speed, but I think this is a really good use of the site. It always feels like this kind of sits vacant and feels a little empty at times of the year. And so I think this will be a real nice add for this part of Minnetaka. So looking forward to this thriving.
Thank you. Anybody else want to give comments? Commissioner Brink?
Yeah, thank you Chair. Yeah, I will echo Commissioner Hanson's comments there. I think this is a great addition for the site, especially in, I think for the community in general, it'll make a lot of eastbound motorists on Highway 7, you know, happy that they got this place they can turn right into, grab their coffee and take a ride out and go. So, and I think the, you know, the main, I think, one of the main issues in my mind was just the traffic and the circulation. And I think that's all been addressed pretty well, both by the consultants with their traffic professional doing a study and then the city's consultant, SRF, doing another look at it on top of that. I think the traffic and the circulation's been addressed pretty well. So I think the site will work pretty well and it'd be a great addition. And I look forward to seeing it happen.
Commissioner Minion?
Thank you Chair. You can hear me, all right. I liked quite a bit about this. I appreciate the presentation, Drew and Mr. Gustafson. Parking lots are necessary, but they're not always pretty. And quite frankly, I've seen this as an underused parking lot for years. Now tenants come and go, and as the businesses come and go, that would probably change. So I like the way that the cities come up with this plan for adding the extra spaces if needed. I think that's a really intelligent way to go. But just having that extra green space is really nice. I think it's going to improve the look of things. Plus, it's a great business plan. I wonder about how long people are going to be waiting, but I like the fact you have 19 spots where you can park cars. If you're doing them in cycling mode at three and a half minutes apiece, that's really great to see. And I really like the fact that there's no speakers. I think that's a great concept that people, the people in the community will appreciate. It just seems like a little nicer, a little nicer buffering, the green space that comes with it. So I really appreciate too, the fact that you're using an energy-efficient envelope. I realize that it might not be a I realize that it might not be a solar-friendly or something like the way we can do alternative energies, but the fact that you're doing an energy-efficient build and envelope, I think is really a great, a great product. So I'm very much in support of it. Thank you.
Thanks. I also agree that taking what is now an underutilized parking lot, it's already impervious surface by the creek, to put some business here makes a lot of sense. And the space for a drive-through business does make sense near this, Highway 7, where there's a lot of access and visibility. I'm a little questioning the business model, just for Minnesota, of having sliding doors with people constantly in and out, and bringing you your hot coffee, and these poor high school students are going to be so cold. I would never go here in the winter, because I would feel so guilty asking someone to do that. And however energy-efficient your envelope is, if you're sliding doors opening every four and a half minutes, well, 19 times four and a half minutes, I don't think that's necessarily relevant. So there's, there can be a way to have, right, double doors, or rotating, or a way to sort of keep the heat in the building, so that your, your staff in that building can stay warm. I think that'll be, that'll be important. But that's a problem for your, your business, not for me, for land use. So as far as land use goes, I think having a conditional use permit here, I agree with the city staff that that makes sense for this site. At this point, I think we're ready for a motion. This would be a recommendation to the city council that would be heard on December 8th. I'm looking for a motion to recommend that the city council adopt the resolution approving a conditional use permit and final site and building plan at Seven Brew, at 17501, Highway 7.
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion.
Motion, Minion?
I'll second.
Second. Hanson? Staff, will you please pull the commission? Minion?
Yes.
Brink?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Chair Maxwell?
Yes. That's four votes, the motion carries. Good luck with your project. All right, and that, final item is adjournment. Who would like to make a motion to adjourn?
I will make that motion.
Motion, Hanson?
I'll second.
Second, Brink. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we're adjourned. Good night.